Yes, welcome everyone. I'd like to begin this meeting by saying congratulations to all our staff and teachers because it was a teacher appreciation week last week and we didn't have a meeting. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for all the wonderful things you do for us. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor? Okay. Going to move something up.
Do we have some announcements?
Oh, that's right. Go ahead, Mr. Rerick. Oh, he's on his device.
Personnel announcements?
Consent agenda.
Retirement's Grade One Fort Barton, I'm sorry, Leave of Absence, Grade One Fort Barton, Christine Press, Retirement World Language, Tiverton High School March Eagles. And then correspondence, you have Resurrection, Smithfield School Committee, Guarding Contract Continuation, A Letter from Governor Chaffey stating that he received our correspondence that he sent him a couple of months ago. You have the Quarterly Treasures Report.
And the correspondence that Governor Chaffey sent to us was in response to our letter about NICAP, not to have that to count for graduation and also to slow down the process with PAC and Common Core. So he did respond, all he did was say that he received it. But he was the only one that did respond. No one else responded. So, thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to move up Item 7A Spotlight on Success and 7D High Schools School Improvement Team Request.
Second.
All those in favor?
We'll start with Mrs. Nathan here. I'm going to see if we can read Carvallo here from the high school. Why don't we start with Mrs. Mitchell in the middle school. Spotlight on Success.
Thank you. Mrs. Stinchcomb, would you like to go up? We have two students who won the Holocaust Education Center and Museum of Rhode Island's Annual Arts and Writing Contest. Danica Bebe will be introduced to the morning and Nathaniel Madeiras and Miss Tiberat, if you will.
We actually had three students that were recognized. One boy who's not here tonight is Devin Foley. He received honorable mention for his two-dimensional art submission. And Nathaniel Madeiras won first place in Grade Seven for his short story. And Danica Beebe has won the Singer Award, which is the highest award given. Two students who participated in this contest and hers was an audiovisual presentation. Daniel has brought his short story with you and before I introduce him and ask him if he would read the story, if you'd like to hear it, the theme of the contest was Through the Eyes of Children. Now, the Holocaust is a topic that we study in Language Arts Department. We do it in the seventh grade as part of our nonfiction unit. And so we've been participating for a number of years and I've always had a number of people from Tiverton Middle School who are representing us with their fine work. Nathaniel, would you come up, please? Bring your story.
The world can be a dark place. The world has had some dark years. The world has hosted some dark people. A perfect example of this is what the Nazis, to my family and many others, simply because we are Jewish. I remember it like it was yesterday. It was a rainy night when there was a knock at my dad's door. I knew who it was instantly. It was the Nazi soldiers here to take us away. Right away, my dad waved us away to our hiding spot in the pantry with the pull-away curtains. I closed them just enough so my little brother and I could see what was going on. Since we were so far away, I could not make out what they were saying when he opened the door. One of the soldiers laid his hands on my dad. I tried to stay quiet, so quiet. My dad resisted and threw the man's hand off his shoulder. The soldier hit him with the butt of his gun. My brother screamed. The soldier pointed towards us. We were captured. I wanted to fight, but I stayed strong for my brother. I knew letting them take us was the safest thing to do. We were put on a train to Bergen-Belsen that night. The train had a stench that haunts my nostril still today. We were packed in the train way beyond our carrying capacity. I felt like I was going to be crushed. I was about to cry when I heard the door open. We had arrived to the camp. The smell of the camp made me sick to my stomach. The guard in charge was called the Todbar, or Death Bear in English. He was colossal. I wanted to cry, but I could not let my brother see that I was breaking down. I just stood there with a blank look on my face. The Todbar saw me and gave me a demonic smile. It was like he was amused by this. What kind of sick person would enjoy any of this? But like I said, the world has hosted some dark people. We have been here for three weeks now and my brother can't take it anymore. One day, the Todbar came to our cell and picked my brother up by his tatted shirt and lifted him to his feet. He collapsed. He tried again, but he fell again. The Todbar quickly got tired of this and dragged him off away. That was the last I ever saw of him. Why was I so compliant? Why did I just let them take him? As I scratched the thirty-eighth day into the wall, I am not sure how much more I can take. I am nameless, hopeless, and soulless. I have been broken down and beaten. Though I have only been here a little more than a month, it feels like I've been here a lifetime. Will this be the day that I am free, at least in my mind? We have the same routine, barely fed, regularly beaten. I can't do it anymore. I won't do it anymore. One day, the Todbar came to my cell. He expected me to get up and work, but I just sat there. I was done with all of this. He grabbed me by my collar the same way he grabbed my brother and pulled out a pistol. But before he could shoot me, I heard gunshots. It was the sound of the British trying to liberate the camp. The Todbar dropped me and ran to fight. I saw the open gate and started running. I ran and ran and did not look back. I was almost afraid to look back. I am free now. The war is over, but it does not feel over to me. I am still haunted by the face of my dead brother. I can still remember the night when my father died. I can still smell the odor of Bergen-Belsen. When I close my eyes, I can see the Todbar. I can still see his demonic smile. This is why I can't sleep at night. This is why when I do sleep, I wake up in a pool of sweat. This is why I cry.
Danica, would you come up, please? Danica put together this slideshow with a lot of work on the computer. Well, you can see for yourself.
I can't imagine it. I can't imagine today.
Place the words.
Life became like, it's very difficult to describe. It wasn't by any means pleasant. I would never, never believe it sounds like that.
Danica received a hundred dollars from the museum. And so we had three winners and Danica was the overall winner throughout the state in every single category.
Congratulations.
Very nice. Congratulations.
Is there anyone else, Mr. Rerick? Is Nate coming? Elaine? Elaine, is Nate coming?
He...
If he comes, we can put him on if he comes in. Okay.
I think he works.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming, everyone. That was wonderful. Now, the next one is...
7D.
7D.
7D?
Yes. High School Sit Committee Request.
Good evening. I'm Judy Moore and I'm also, I'm a teacher here at the high school, but I'm also a co-adviser on the School Improvement Team. And I'm here tonight seeking your approval on our recent initiative that the School Improvement Team has put together. So let me bring your attention to this picture and particularly the strip of land, this is between the teacher parking lot and straight ahead is the gymnasium where you would walk into the gym. So we had the idea of instead of every day looking at this gloomy, really boring piece of land, is we would like to put five cherry trees, the flowering cherry trees like you see in Washington DC, in that strip of land. I've already talked to one of our local landscapers and he's willing to donate trees. This is going to come at no cost to us. I did the mathematical computations. Five will fit perfect. There are very, there's a few varieties of that type of tree, but the one that we are more familiar with in DC, it's the Yoshino cherry. And it's a slow growing. It takes about twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five years to mature. And they don't get really large because one of my concerns was, is it going to get so wide that it would, you know, impede either the driveway or the parking area? And it won't. They get about twenty feet tall and wide at the top. And that strip of land here is about eighteen feet wide by one hundred and fourteen feet long. So you could easily stagger, put five trees right along and over time, they would grow into have this beautiful, in the spring while we are still here to enjoy it, something pleasant to drive into and it would make me happy to come to work and see such a beautiful tree in the morning. And the students, too.
Judy, could we just acknowledge who the landscaper was?
Sanford. Let me show you, actually. One more thing to show you.
Because that's quite generous.
It is.
So this is sort of photoshopped in what the after effect would look like. And I actually have pictures of that to hand you, but the tops of the trees aren't cut off.
Yeah, I think there's one in our basket.
Do you have one?
Oh, great. Great.
Looks nice.
Looks nice in color.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it looks really nice, the whole thing in color. Any other questions?
So it was, who? It was Bill Sanford?
Bill Sanford. I spoke with Bill and Don.
Nice. Okay.
It's a tree that survives well in this climate.
They do. They survive very well in this climate.
And what's your anticipated timeline?
I would like to jump on this as soon as possible, so...
Is he waiting outside?
Yeah. You know, as soon as possible.
That's great.
Of course, you know, just to take care for this, let it get established.
That's right.
Get the watering taken care of, you know. And, you know, I'm a gardener. I'll totally, you know, work with my team as far as maintaining and getting them established.
That sounds like a great idea.
That's great. That's going to be a great addition, Judy.
Thank you so much.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions from anybody? Okay. Mr. Rerick?
Could be a good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Superb.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, Judy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rerick, next on the policies.
Yes, we have three policies that are coming back for second meeting and possible approval. 481 Extracurricular Activities, 1021 Parent Organization, which includes PTOs. If 1021 is approved, 1022 will be removed from the policy manual. And third policy that is up for review tonight is 1231 Fundraising Sales and Solicitation. And I do believe the necessary changes that are asked in policy for a new statement that we bear to the board's policies.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Excuse me, I just had one question.
Yep.
On 481.
Yep.
The third paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, "No group can represent itself," and then it says, "Tiverton School Department Organization," by approval of the Board. But on the other ones, it says Board or Superintendent and/or Superintendent. You know what I mean?
Mine has "by the Board" crossed out so that it now reads, unless it has been approved.
Okay, that's, so that's a period there.
Oh, wait a minute. All right. Mine doesn't have that. Oh, mine has the line through "by the Board."
No, it doesn't. So the line before, the line before says Board or Superintendent and/or, which I like, and/or. But this one doesn't, so I thought we should cross out "by the Board."
It is crossed out.
Right. Is it crossed out on my...
On mine, it's not.
On mine, it's not crossed out. I crossed it out myself.
By the Board, it goes by the sentence.
Yeah, mine goes by the...
Yeah, not the one, two, third line.
Oh, I got you. I got you.
The end of the sentence.
The end of the sentence, so should we...
No activity shall be considered to be under the sponsor's...
Should have been approved.
Period.
Yes, that paragraph ends unless it has been approved.
Period. Because mine has "by the Board," so it wouldn't go with the one before. Okay.
Unless it has been approved. Oh, because...
Because we already said approved by the school board.
And/or the superintendent.
And/or the supervisor. Yeah. So we'll take that last one out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
This. It's already crossed out.
Yeah, it is crossed out. Okay.
So it's Board and/or Superintendent?
I think it is. It's white.
That's good. Yeah.
Yep. I think, I think because a lot of the old language called it a school board, so when we're rewriting it...
I don't want to have to bring it back in.
No. I think it's just, we do both.
Okay, so that's good. Everything else is good. Thank you.
So you started to make a motion?
I think we can.
I don't have any other concerns or objections. I'm just going to come in back for a final...
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve 41, 1021, 1022, and 1231.
1022 because...
Or 1022 for elimination and then 1231.
Do I have any questions from anyone? Thank you to the Policy Committee for all the hard work and Mr. Rerick.
And thank you to the parents who all showed up and helped.
The parents that helped. That's very good.
Could we make sure that the principals get copies to the PTOs, the sports, and the music boosters? And I think that's it.
Just of that word?
Of all, of all of them, actually.
Yes.
Because they're impacted really by all of them. PTOs, right, Bill?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Next.
6A, the School Committee has a proposal submitted by one of our parents of stage regarding positioning the four parts.
Yes. Excuse me.
Good evening, everyone. Hello again.
Hi, Charlie.
Has everyone had a chance to review the proposal?
Uh-huh.
So we don't need to go through it sort of line by line. I guess I'll maybe open it up to questions, concerns from you guys because you sort of see what we have to, what we're bringing to the table.
How has these units come to the mountain because what's acceptable for the residential installation?
They're freestanding units.
They're portable.
Oh, they are freestanding?
They are freestanding units, yes.
Okay, then it's no problem.
Yeah.
The windows in those classrooms only open about six inches, so...
But that's for ventilation.
Correct.
But they roll in, right?
Yes, they're on casters and freestanding. That's right.
I guess I'll start. It's a very well-thought-out plan. I appreciate your coming forward with the details and for showing so much patience. We inherited a situation where we have in fact had air conditioners in classrooms with building-level approval only. And that's been the case for several years. And so because we can't go back and change anything, I think, given that, my preference for moving forward would be to sort of formalize that and to say that the, any air conditioners that go in individual classrooms should be approved by the building principal and/or the superintendent. And there's a couple of reasons for that. First of all, the building principals, I think, are best able to decide where they should go. They're best able to answer questions of equity. And I'm sure at some point, a parent's going to say, why is one third-grade classroom air-conditioned and another one isn't? The principals are going to be best able to come up with a rationing plan if suddenly one day all the circuits are tripped because every classroom's running full blast. And I think that that just seems a better route than having individual requests and complaints and questions and issues continually come in front of the Board or School Committee, as we call ourselves. But I am interested to hear if anybody else has a preference for another way of handling this.
I know I haven't been here for a few months, but I watch the meetings and trying to come up to speed. I think one of the, and I'm actually coming to that in a different way. I think that our focus really needs to be the overall facilities plan. And I think we have some longer-term decisions to make for cooling, for fans, whatever. But I unfortunately think they're going to be longer-term solutions. And I want to give the superintendent and I want to give the building principals and the parents the freedom to work out these interim solutions while we're doing that because I do think it's going to be longer term. So my preference would be, yes, we have sort of established that process because I know the superintendent certainly is going to be on top of the, you know, there is a cost issue, there's a safety issue. But I think you're going to have a lot more flexibility working with principals and the superintendent than to have to keep coming back to us. And our focus really should be the long-term financial plans and the more immediate needs. But I don't discount, I think there are some real issues in all the schools. And I just, I agree. I think it's better at a lower level. That doesn't mean that anything, you guys, you guys, this is done, it's perfect. I mean, if the superintendent's okay with it, literally could meet with Suzette tomorrow and this is done. But I think since we're setting policy, we're setting precedent, my preference would be to have this sort of happen at a lower level if the superintendent is comfortable with that.
So I think, yeah, that's a bit of a separate issue. I don't disagree with you. I think we have to sort of decide, will we accept this proposal, right?
I don't think we do. I think we set, because once we do that, now we've set the precedent that you can come before us with individual proposals. I think we pretty much, I think we can just set the policy that individual proposals are going to be handled by the principals and the superintendent, including this one. And that's why I said, literally, tomorrow morning, they could all meet and be done with it. It's a great proposal, they've done all the work. I don't want to set the precedent of, well, we took this one, but we're not going to take the next one.
I completely understand what you guys are saying. I would just simply like to point out that we went to the principal and the superintendent a year ago.
And that's why I get that. That's what I said. This was our first... It took us that long to get back where we are.
I understand that, but tomorrow morning is, I'm trying not to have that reaction. You can play a lawyer here for a minute, even though I bravely acknowledge I'm not a lawyer.
But you could play one on TV.
The precedent we've thus far established is that we have agreed to take up the matter. I mean, that's kind of what we've been doing for the last, I don't know, seven, eight months. So I think we have to sort of make some sort of statement about this proposal.
And then kind of on a go-forward basis, this is what it's going to be done.
And then as a separate matter, say...
I could live with that. That's a fair compromise, Jerry.
As a separate matter, say, maybe we should...
Going forward, yeah.
You know, that, one thing we're doing is setting a precedent, a policy, as something else again. And we would have to actually write a policy about, you know, I think we have a donation policy, don't we?
We do, but this kind of goes beyond that. This is not donation.
Absolutely.
This goes beyond, I think, just, but I would, that would be a fair compromise, I think.
The reason why the Fort Barton PTO is, you know, sort of before is because we've been hearing from them, you know, at our consent for seven, eight months. So I think we do have to...
So the compromise would be, you know, we'll take care of this one, but sort of set the policy.
Move it forward.
And it doesn't have to be formal. It can be oral, that please work with the principals and the superintendent and...
And I think it's important to note that with any decisions we make operationally, they're all subject to appeal.
True.
So, you know, in this case, I would have approved the request because it was a well- drawn-out proposal. But in the future, if there was a case where every decision I make is reversible or appealable, as I said, it's a discover. So it's...
Well, and we don't have to prove everything on a decision you make.
No, no. That's the problem, no?
When you buy the pencils, you do that on your own.
The only thing that's different about this proposal is that the units you're proposing would stay with the PTO. And generally, our policy is that they would be, you know, they belong to the school department. I think in this case, it may make some sense for you to retain ownership, one, because they're not going to be installed, and two, really because I see it as a pilot program. And if in a month and a half from now, you find out those units really aren't working, you may want to replace them with something else. And then, and we may agree, but if we don't, but if we own them at that point, it gets very complicated.
That was exactly our reasoning. And actually, I mean, the language in here says the PTO would prefer to retain ownership. However...
But you said...
In reading your draft of the new policy, it's clear in there that donations are...
In general.
Part of the school.
In general, yes.
So that's the only reason that we put in that if the school district would prefer, we would donate them to school. We would much prefer to.
And I think that's another reason why I kind of want, you know, the superintendent then has that flexibility to look at those things individually, outside of this one. But look at those things individually and work with the principals and the parents and without having to wait two weeks to come to us and us to talk about it for a year.
That's right.
And I do think it's very different from a window unit that get installed and then...
I was very happy with the roll-in.
So just to speed this along, Superintendent Rerick, would you recommend that we accept this proposal?
I am going to make a motion that we...
Wait a minute, please. I just want to, Yanni, do you want to say anything?
Well, once I make the motion, he can, Charlie. I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion. Yanni?
I just want to make sure that, where's the line about insurance, for example, if somebody gets electrocuted? I'm not trying to make it difficult, but in terms of this being property of a school versus property of some other organization...
Are we allowed to take place?
We are covered.
I would assume we're...
Good to hear.
look at those things individually and work with the principals and the parents and without having to wait two weeks to come to us and us to talk about it for a year.
That's right.
And I do think it's very different from a window unit that get installed and then...
I was very happy with the roll-in.
So just to speed this along, Superintendent Ririck, would you recommend that we accept this proposal? I am going to make a motion that we...
Wait a minute, please, I just want, Yanni, do you want to say anything?
Well, once I make the motion, he can, Sally. I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal.
Second discussion. Yanni?
I just want to make sure that, where's the line about insurance, for example, if somebody gets electrocuted? I'm not trying to make it difficult, but in terms of this being property of the school versus property of some other organization...
Are we allowed to take place? I would assume we're...
We are covered.
No different than when we bring in the bouncy things for post-prom, you know, those...
Anything that would be wrong, that would be liable for.
I mean, here again, I think the principals would be best able to determine if there are any hazards. I don't know if these get very hot because they're, you know, they're not hanging out the window, but if there is some sort of safety concerns with six, seven year olds, then again, the principal would, yeah, would be monitoring and make sure they're located where students couldn't stick a finger where they shouldn't.
Exactly. And I'm confident that Superintendent Ririck, if this becomes an issue that breakers are tripping and we'll bring it back.
Or you, you're not going to be happy if that's happening.
No, exactly. I mean, everybody wants these to work, so...
So you're okay with it, Mr. Ririck? Does anyone else have any? Marsha?
I don't have the backup. Can you just briefly say...
Would you like a copy?
It is, it's, well, I'm happy to read it, but in the interest of time, I would also say it's online with the agenda and I have a copy here, but we are proposing to buy six portable units for the upstairs classrooms at Fort Barton School. We're proposing to pay for the units and also an annual stipend to cover the electrical use situation here. For three.
We're just changing the tape, Charlie.
Oh, my goodness. And thank you for being so patient and working with us for so long. And are all those in favor of it? Yay, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Kim. The budget? Yes, I know, it's just about the budget, about the budget.
I'll speak. And this is more for the people watching as well, and, you know, our parents and our teachers. We have a budget that's been recommended for our budget committee, by our budget committee, and there is a citizen petition that is recommending an alternative, and I would just ask, there are several things that have come from our elected treasurer that are available at town hall and that are available from her that caution us very, very strongly about taking money from our unreserved general fund, which the second petition proposes for various reasons, including we have a bond coming forward next year. She also says that a unreserved general fund allows us to respond in emergency situations, to reduce borrowing costs, to provide stability in managing the town's funds, and I would just ask that people please go and get a copy of what our elected treasurer has provided as far as backup for her opinion on that issue.
And just to review, the budget process this year began in October, and that was the first time that there was ever a pre-budget hearing, and we all got together, the town council, school committee, and budget committee, to talk about any issues we might have for the upcoming year. Then they started their meetings every week from January on, and as we said before, it can get very heated and a lot of debates go on, and when I, I said the other night, we're not holding our hands and singing kumbaya. It's about, should we have a planner, shouldn't we, and the pensions and everything else. So it's a very intense process, and this year, the town council was meeting on Saturday mornings, actually, till about 2:00 in the afternoon, trying to put the budget together, so I think everyone did an excellent job this year, and please go out and support whatever budget you believe in. The vote is on the 20th. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Park Field Test? Oh, did anybody else have anything about the budget? It's just general information, okay?
Yeah, just, I put this on the agenda because I'd like Suzette, especially to suggest this test online, just to kind of report to the committee briefly, and Mr. DeBra, since this school also tested what they saw during the first field test, the middle school and the high school were scheduled for later, so I just wanted to...
Sure. So we had all of our third grade students took the online version of the practice assessment, and our students loved it. They loved taking the online assessment. What we did is we had them take the practice assessment first, and we made sure I had, Mr. Notorianni was there to help support us, and we also had, Mr. Cadino was there, so we had the text award there, which was invaluable. And I also had the teachers, the teacher of the class there, and I also had the guidance counselor with us, so we had other adults in the room. And we went to the training session. The children were able to access other online tools like highlighting text, and they learned how to read text on one side and type on the other side. We only took the reading portion. They used a magnifier to enlarge some of the text. All of the auxiliary tools, any students could access at any time, so that was really a plus. The students had plenty of time to complete the assessments. We did have, I would say, a few students that wanted extended time because they were continuing to work, and we, you know, gave them the extended time, I was permitted. There were some students that did say that they had information in their head, they had so much information in their head, and their fingers couldn't type all the information they had in their head because they didn't have enough typing skills to get everything down. So we did notice that with the online version. But other than that, the kids viewed it as a very positive experience, so Fort Barton was successful.
So technically, there weren't any glitches with freezing screens or things like that?
They, we did have some students that were logged out of the test during the assessment. When they were logged out of the test during the assessment, Mr. Notorianni helped us very quickly, helped log students back on. Like I said, Mr. Cadino was there too. We were able to troubleshoot very quickly. The longest amount of time that any student was logged out of the assessment was no more than two minutes.
How many students, Suzette, were in the room?
The first was 23, and then the second was 24.
Okay, and they were present for both?
And so how many adults would you recommend we should plan on having in the room, say, for a similar assessment in the future, based on, you know, your experience?
For the online, I would think a minimum of two, and I've heard that other states do an online assessment with just one. Personally, I felt more comfortable having another person there because it was my very first time administering and having us administer this particular assessment, and what happened was, if a student was logged off accidentally, one person was helping that student log back on, another person would have to go over to the computer, and would have to go onto the main screen, would have to find that student, log that student back off, log that student back on, and then that student would have to log on. So it's kind of like a process, so it's nice to have an extra set of hands because at that moment, another student could have a question. So even if there's just one person that was troubleshooting that, to have another set of eyes floating around, for the younger children. Maybe one person could administer it for the upper grades, but I think for younger children, to have two people in the room would really help if it's online.
Do they have to be, I mean, because Mr. Cadino and Mr. Notorianni are tech specialists, would they need to be tech people? Or is, or was it something that, no, if you had some basic training, you could, or Al, if you have any comments too, is it something we could train people?
We could train people, which is, I was going to wait, you know, until Suzette was done. In my opinion, there were some small little video glitches and whatnot, which I, other districts also reported with my colleagues, we talked about it. I think for it to be successful, there is going to, and I don't think Wright anticipated this, that there's going to, we're going to need to run through with the teachers, whether the test proctors in the room, we're going to have to go through what Suzette and I, or Suzette more or less was the test proctor, and Greg and I were there to make sure that it went through, to see how it was going to perform. I would think that we're going to have to do some training with those teachers, they're going to be the test proctors. We're going to probably have to give them a cheat sheet to know what to do because if Wright were to, and I don't know where we're at, but if they eventually were to say, everyone has to test online, obviously, we can't be in every classroom in the testing onlineified buildings. So I do think that there's going to be some backend training and a cheat sheet, like I said, as to, here's what to do if this happens. You know, one of the kids, I think, accidentally hit the power button on the laptop.
Wow.
You know, and there are security protocols that, you know, if you click off the screen of the test, it shuts down the test because they don't want you to more or less cheat and go to the internet and look something up. So there's some things that we're going to have to play with and work out.
We did the paper version of the test, which is similar, similar to NECA, as far as, some of the restrictions they put on this test were a little different. We couldn't pass out the test, we couldn't even open up the packages until the day of the test. We had to put the labels on after the testing, so there were some things that were different from the POC test and NECA. I think the content was very different. Something that we're working on, and of course, we've been working on for the last few years in, you know, curriculums and updating our curriculum. Overall, the kids did well, you know, they all worked hard, they tried their best, but I thought it was a more difficult test. It was, it was one classroom.
One third grade, man?
One third grade classroom.
ELA?
ELA.
So overall, doing better off not doing, am I right?
I wouldn't say...
Not having kids or anything, so...
Yanni, you know what, Yanni, Yanni.
I'm seeing...
No, you're being disrespectful. You're being disrespectful and sarcastic to the members of the school committee who did not agree with you, and I'm not going to sit here and tolerate it. I'm not, Sally. Please.
Just one comment.
And that's an appropriate comment to make, Mr. Burganti.
Just one comment that I would like to make. I think it was a good experience for the kids to see what type of tests they're going to take, as well as the teachers, you know.
But the teachers were not allowed to read any of the questions.
But they were allowed to be in the room to see how the kids reacted to the test.
They could watch the children, yes.
But see how they were struggling with certain parts of it, see some of the curriculum things that we have to look at.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
It was something that, I didn't see any more stress during this test than we see during any other testing environment.
That's good to hear.
The kids worked very hard, they tried their best, they weren't worried about whether they were getting a score or not getting a score, they were trying to do their best for the school and doing their best for state testing like they always do.
When do we see the math?
Depends on the schools and what you're...
Oh, you did math?
We field tested math in fifth and sixth grade.
Well, I was going to say...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, we had 50 fifth graders and 56th graders, and in a few weeks, we'll have 57th graders at the end of the year.
And were they all paper?
Paper.
Everybody was, the only, the only online, that's what I wanted to, just kind of talk about. In the high school, that's, I believe, down in 10.
ELA and... So did you do the math yet?
Yes, we did the math.
And how did you find it?
Similar to what Manny said, the kids were less anxious than what we expected. We felt that it was very challenging and rigorous, and we are not at all sorry that we participated in it at this point. Protocols have changed, security is incredibly onerous, and you could jump through a lot of hoops. So we're glad we got that piece nailed, our guidance counselors and the admin team, because it's very different from NECA's. We have our seventh graders, two seventh grade math classes at the end of the year piece. So I have a pretty good view.
Good.
Mr. Ririck, how many parents opted out in general? Okay. All right, so now we'll go on to, anybody else have anything about that? Anybody else? No? The boiler?
Yes, the place Mr. Piro made, we went out to bid, we've talked about this before, the metal that ran from the boiler to the chimney out behind Play School had deteriorated this year. We went out to bid to have it repaired, and we're recommending that Atlantic Power Services, Inc., Seacott, Mass., be awarded the worth of $17,532, and this amount was $5,000 less than the first estimate that we get, so we're pleased that, not pleased that we have to do the work, but pleased that it was at least less expensive than the boiler.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid. Is there other recommendations of the bid?
Any questions for anyone? No? All those in favor?
Thank you.
The grade four gift?
Yeah, I'll kick it to Mr. DeBra.
The PTO this year has decided they want to purchase another bench, the same exact bench that we have outside the building. We want to get another bench for the opposite side of the...
The twin.
Yeah, the same exact bench. It's worked out well, but really, the only people that use the bench, more so it's parents when they're picking up students. Midday gets to use a little more because those parents usually get there earlier, so they're sitting there. At the end of the day, it's just quite a few parents, so first three gets it.
And it looks really nice, too. It's very nice.
Yeah, it's nice, nice.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? We did the sit committee.
Oh, that's the gift, I'm sorry.
This is the grade four, grade four gift.
I was still up at the boiler.
Diane, Diane?
This is, I think this is the first time we've really broken down because the facilities we're really is how we spend our time on, so going along, you know, grants, grants we see, I felt was appropriate. I think we'll take a couple of minutes just to, because we need to, what exactly we will receive from the government, so.
We're getting ready for our annual submission, which comes up in June of each month, and the CRP includes Title I.
CRP.
The Consolidated Resource Plan, thank you, which is the application for federal funds, and it's filled out online. It's a pretty lengthy process, so I began a couple of months ago collecting the information that I need. Title I is a grant that's provided to districts for disadvantaged youths, and I'll go through each of them in more detail as we go along. Title II is for educator quality, and then there's the IDEA, which stands for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and there's two components of that, that's Part B, and then there's also preschool. And the allocations that we received are based on student enrollment, as well as special education, and free and reduced lunch numbers. In addition to the application process, which is usually a lot of back and forth and submitting more information, there's also monitoring that we have to do during the year, and then reporting throughout the year and at the end of the year, and then this, these grants are also part of the town and school department audit. So they go through everything with a fine-tooth comb. On occasion, they do site visits and they come in and they, you know, look at our programs and they ask for backup information and things like that. So I want to also reference the restrictiveness of the federal grants. Throughout all of the grants, we have to be very conscious that we are supplement... Throughout all of the grants, we have to be very conscious that we are supplementing and not supplanting, so it means that we can't use these federal funds for things that we would ordinarily fund through our local dollars, or to replace something. For example, with Title I, I can't pay for classroom teachers out of that, that should be paid for out of the local budget, it is to supplement what we are already providing at the local level. So again, here are the grants that we are applying for. When I first began this job twelve years ago, there were two additional grants, but they've kind of been fine-tuning things. So we'll start with Title I.
I was gonna say, is that code for the limited?
Okay, safe and drug-free schools, no more. And then there was another one, a Title V one, that was for enrichment activities for three thousand dollars, but, anyway, moving along, now we're down to Title I, which the allocation that we're projected to receive for next year is two hundred thousand dollars, and along with that, we have a little bit of unapplied money for this year. So what happens is they give us our initial allocation, we apply for that, and somewhere during the year, after they settle all of the school applications, and the charter school, the allocations that they receive, they might come back and give us a little bit more. We usually leave it unimplied, just because we're always uncertain as to next year whether we'll receive the same funding or not.
And they let you carry that over?
They do, they let us carry it over.
But it's the same kinda supplement, it has to, it's supplement, not supplant?
Yep, it falls under the same guidelines. There are restrictions that you have to expend a certain percentage of the funds each year, so you can't carry over a lot of it, and there's a timeline of when funds do need to be spent, it's, it's pretty complicated.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, the purpose of Title I is to ensure that all children have fair, equal, and significant opportunity to obtain a high-quality education, and reach a minimum proficiency on challenging state academic achievement standards. So it's really intended to give disadvantaged youth an advantage in their learning. Within the application process, we have to do a school ranking report to designate which school or schools will be Title I schools, and Title I schools are typically the high, the schools with the highest percentage of children from low-income families, and the report that I have to complete uses school enrollment data, as well as free and, free and reduced lunch information, to determine which school has the highest percentage.
And there's no other data used? Because if you base it all on families that apply for free and reduced lunch, seems to me you're missing those families who are needy, but who do not apply, and we all know we have those families in every school district.
The allocation that we receive actually comes from the town census data, so it's not from.
Or versus who's applied. Okay, so.
It's just in the process of allocating the school-level funding. And in addition, I have to reach out to the private schools that Tiverton students attend to determine if there are students receiving free and reduced lunch or eligible for it there, and those poverty numbers actually come in. It's only one or two, but it's a very thorough process, and in much a bigger district, that would be, you know, would make more of the difference in designating a Title I school. For the past few years, Picassett has been our Title I school, they typically had the highest percentage of, of children with free and reduced lunch. At one point, we did have additional funding, and Fort Barton was receiving some Title I funds as well, but as the funds dwindled, it seemed, it made more sense to just focus the program in one school. We do provide similar services, referred to as Title I-like services, and all of our elementary schools and our math, our, excuse me, our middle school and high school also have supplemental services which are similar to Title I.
That drop at middle school, is that odd?
Well.
No.
On a building level, we see maybe a thirty-two percent, our numbers are different. These are, I don't know how they arrive at their numbers.
My numbers were taken from the, the enrollment data within school max, so. So, that, that's what the numbers.
Thirty-two percent makes more sense.
'Cause they all come from those schools, right?
Well, we can look at that again, Mrs. Mitchell, if you, but I contacted Mrs. Looby to get all of the information on the same.
And it's all the same kids that go with her, for most reasons, right?
And we'll revisit that. And since, again, since I've been in the position, the numbers have really grown. At one point, when I first started, the middle and high school were maybe around fourteen or fifteen percent, and Picassett School was maybe around twenty-one percent.
And this is, this is the free and reduced lunch number?
Yes.
And I, I don't wanna date you or anything, but like, how many years was that, Diane?
That's in twelve years.
Okay, thanks.
So is there some trend where they just stop applying for it at that?
Yes.
They do.
Children don't wanna, they don't want to tag of having to, you know, being known as a free and reduced.
Which is why we expect the middle school to be high, and it go down at the, at the high school, because that's what usually happens.
Yeah, and then, Laurie's saying that she has different numbers.
So it's always interesting to look at every year. So our Title I program at Picassett School is comprised of a reading specialist that is full-time, and a math specialist that works four days a week.
And is that because we do not have enough funds to cover five days a week?
Correct.
For the math specialist?
When additional funds do become available, if we have carryover due to a change in staff members, I meet with the principal and the Title I teachers, and we determine how the funds can best be used. Typically, we try to do after-school tutoring programs, or sometimes it could be professional development for teachers. Oftentimes, too, we'll try to buy supplemental materials for the students. So next, we go to Title II, which is educator quality. It can also be used to reduce class size, to increase student achievement, and that part of it is really historical, just in the sense that initially, the grant was more focused on that. In recent years, it's shifted more to be about educator quality. There's a pretty big narrative that needs to be filled out on how we will use the funds, when we are able to use it for professional development, we have to justify it with the need for it, and how we'll evaluate it, and all of that. So this year's allocation is, excuse me, for the next school year, it'll be eighty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, and we do have some carryover from this year that, again, we kind of put away, you never know how the federal grants are gonna go, and we wanna make sure that we have enough in there, so we have an additional eight thousand dollars. The components of our Title II program include reduction of class size through a reading specialist that is partially funded through Title II, so point eight oh of her salary comes from Title II, and the remainder is from local, and she provides small group instruction in reading and writing. And then the remainder of the, the grant, and again, it fluctuates every year, we're able to do a little bit of professional development with that to support district initiatives. Many districts do not fund any salary positions out of Title II, they use it solely for professional development, so having a position in there does eat up quite of a, but, quite a bit of our budget.
Is that because they're concerned that, because if we lose the funding, then you lose the position, and they don't wanna get in that?
Yep, correct, but we've just never had, there just never has been an opportune time to say, okay, let's pull it out of grants.
And put it in the regular operating budget.
Right, we've never had the ability to pay for it.
Yeah, because the risk is always that you'll lose a position, or that you'll, you'll still need the position, you lose the grant, and now you have to build it in.
Correct, yep. And the next grant is IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Part B. The allocation for next year is four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eighty-eight dollars, and we have four thousand, five hundred of unapplied from this year. The purpose of this grant is to ensure that children with disabilities aged three.
Is that changing colors, or is it?
Yeah, it is, the LCD projector is going, or the bulb is going.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't me.
It's for children ages three through twenty-one, so that they have access to a free and appropriate public education that meets each child's unique needs, and prepares each child for further education, employment, and independent living. And in addition to the supplement, not supplant, we also have maintenance of effort as a requirement for IDEA, and it basically means that non-federal expenditures, meaning our local budget for the current year, must reflect at least one hundred percent of the level for the most recent prior year. So with special education costs, that's what they're looking for. So that's very restrictive, we've never had an issue with that, but it is something that we need to look at, and it's part of the grant application.
So it's like a match? If you don't match it, then you're not gonna get?
Right, we did have one year where they came back and they, you know, asked us lots of questions, in the event that you have a, a huge turnover in your student population, or some other significant situation, you would have to explain it within the grant and justify it. Oh, I missed it. So our program components for IDEA, the, the bulk of our funding goes to Newport County Regional Special Education for our specialized services program, and then there is a small amount, fifteen percent of the grant, that we are able to use for early interventing, early intervening services for non-IEP students who are at risk. So we wanna do everything we possibly can to meet a student's needs without having to put them on, on an IEP, and you've heard the, the term RTI, response to intervention, those are our early intervening services. The other IDEA grant is for preschool, it's really just a small amount, and the purpose is to provide preschool students with disabilities access to the general early education curriculum. And that entire amount, and I'm sorry, I didn't read the amount, I should do that, is twelve thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars for preschool, and it's partial funding for our regional special education preschool programs. And this last slide here shows you the increase and decrease in the grants from the previous year. The only grant that went down a little bit, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, was Title II. We had an increase in Title I funding of seventeen thousand dollars, and a majority of that will offset contractual increases in salary and benefits for the Title I teachers. There's a, a little bit that will be left, and we will use that most likely for a supplemental program for students, we're looking at possibly a, a before-school tutoring, we've got some more discussion and planning to do on that. And then also, the increase in IDEA, Part B, will go to offset our excess costs for special education for Newport County regionals programs. That is it in a nutshell, if anyone has any questions?
And Bill, because these are supplemental, these aren't, these aren't part of the budget that we put forward, this is supplemental, extra federal money that we account for, but it's, it's restricted, but it's not part of the budget that we would put forward. Yes, I just wanna make sure that's clear to everyone. I mean, I know that, but.
But, and it's all in the audit.
Right, it's all audited, yep.
You know, so it's not, but this is the chart.
There's also money that if we were not spending locally, we would not be getting this funding, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. Or some of it that if we lost the funding, we would have to make it up locally.
Or we would lose the program, like with the Twenty-First Century Safe and Drug-Free Schools, we lost the school resource officer, remember that year when they cut the budget?
And a reduction in our student assistance counselor as well.
And the student assistance counselor, we used to have one at the high school, we talked about that, one at the middle school. These are, this is the chart of our funding, the most important number, I guess you should look at, is from the federal government, it's only seven hundred something thousand, when you think of our budget. So what we get from the federal government and from the state is really not that much, it's all on the local taxpayers. So, the big elephant in the room, I guess, is that when we look at this chart, again, we see local, federal, you can't even see it, and then state. So Rhode Island, as a state, does not support public education. The latest study that came out, it used to be forty-three to forty-seven, it was going back and forth in the ten years that been here.
That's the blue bar.
Yeah, so now it's, we're third from the bottom in support of public schools.
In terms of state funding?
State funding.
In the US.
Okay, in the whole United States. So, when everyone keeps comparing us, especially to Massachusetts, I don't wanna hear it, not until Rhode Island steps up, and their funding for higher education is even lower, I think they're forty-eighth. So that's really important, that these always be talked about, especially during the budget process. The, this big green line will be going down, if these would be going up, but what we're talking about tonight is this. And so we can see how it goes up and down, and has through the years, and, so when we talk to our senators and, and congresspeople, when they do cut things, we have to call them. The Perkins funding, all the stuff we're supposed to get from them, they vote up there and they just cut it, and no one bothers them, we have to call them, we have to say, you have to stop doing this, everybody has to be all in, if you want us to do the job you're asking all of us to do. That's very important, okay, so everybody, please do that. Thank you, Diane, for that, nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I will point out that when No Child Left Behind was passed, there were nine titles, nine titles, and some of them we didn't qualify for, but some of them we did. And then when they did cut Safe and, Twenty-First Century Safe and Drug-Free Schools, I called Washington, and I said, why would you do that, it's such an important program? And they said, oh, we, I don't think it's working. I said, and how would you know that? How would you know what kids you haven't touched, or what kids didn't go off the rails with the drugs and everything, maybe we prevented it.
And also, Mrs. Black, just to add, that prior to No Child Left Behind, these funds were already in effect through the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA, and when No Child Left Behind came out, they said that they'll have funding for this and funding for that, but it was already from those grants, so there was no new money.
And it was four hundred pages, and after every title, they gave you the funding source that was supposed to come, and then we know the famous saying, the revenue never filed the rhetoric, Senator Reed says that. But, so those, those are all the important things that we have to remember when we talk about our budgeting and our, and everything else. Does anybody have any questions about that? Thank you, Diane, that was a good job presenting that to the public, so they'll understand.
F, we have the recommendation from the town administrator, Mr. Ribeau, for the audit.
Yeah, I probably should put this under correspondence, but I just received a request from the town administrator, Mr. Rollcheck, to give this to the school committee, notice that the town council has hired a new auditing firm, the council, which is their past practice,
But he did say that if anyone from the committee or Mr. Ribeau wants to go to his office and see all the applications and how they were graded, that would be okay, and somebody wanted to know how much the school pays on the audit, and it's twenty thousand, six hundred eighty, and thirteen, nineteen, and then nineteen, and eleven, and twelve, so it's twenty thousand, six hundred eighty, the school pays towards the audit.
One of the things that, you know, we need with the council again, is maybe to get more input to the selection, I mean, this, we do take quite a considerable amount of that, and, you know, we're really at the FYI end of the information tunnel.
I would think especially, only because we have that special requirement in Rhode Island that is not.
We do.
In Mass or Connecticut, where we have that UCOA audit. That, that would be my concern, is that, that's not something that you're gonna find from, in Massachusetts, or, so, but that's probably, I guess, something maybe we can bring up with them when we meet.
I guess I misread, or I read these, the letter differently, so is the fact that they hired this other auditor, is that then our auditor?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
So they made, they made the hiring decision?
For both bodies, yeah.
Right.
And it's different from the auditor that both the town and we used for the last six years?
That's correct.
So we didn't have any input?
I believe, Ms. Black, you probably speak for better, I think the day, Friday before this was approved, the town administrator wanted us to go, Sally, have input on it.
But I, that's not a decision for me, that has to come before.
So you couldn't go?
No, no.
So Sally asked me, and I said, we shouldn't go, because the committee doesn't know about it.
No, we, we had to come before us, and I said, I would bring. No, we had to come before us and I said, I would bring it to our next meeting and we could all discuss it together.
Yeah, so maybe it's something in the future, like these types of things, we can sort of give you, yourself and Doug, some sort of blanket.
Just for conversation, because again, looking at the criteria now, it really doesn't matter.
But not to approve anything, no.
It'd be difficult to reverse this. Is this?
This has been going on for years. Not that it makes it right, but it's been a practice in town. They hire the auditor, we pony up, you know, close to fifty percent of the cost.
And I think part of the rationale, Jerry, in the past, has been that we're being audited.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're the ones being audited, but, yeah, but so are they. I think everybody really is being audited.
Any entity that hires an auditor is.
Being audited.
They're going for themselves.
Right, right, right.
Go audit somebody else.
And it's not like, and it's not like, right.
Critical is this, is this just, because we want to rehearse for it? It's critical.
No, for the RFP, it would have been nice to stipulate the firms should have some.
It's critical for the criteria as that.
Yeah, I mean, we have a very specialized UCOA audit that, yeah.
You have a unique way, like many things in Rhode Island, a unique way of accounting all the funds. And maybe this firm.
I think this is the Little Compton auditor, so they're probably, I'm sure they're fine, but, right.
Those are the types of things you look for or you put in the IRP to see if they have that experience.
And the council may not be aware of them because they don't sit on the school committee type of thing, right.
With his financial background, you know, he knows all that stuff inside and outside. Hopefully in the future.
Yeah, I think we'll just, just mention it.
It's reasonable to be sort of at the table before the decision is made.
Okay.
So now let's move to our chat of accounts.
Speaking of UCOA, Jeff has asked, you know, to discuss.
Yeah, and I think we've, we've talked about, we've talked about briefly, we talked about what we wanted to look at. So it's really just setting a date. And we'll start looking at it, start digging into the UCOA data. After graduation, after, like, late June, I don't know what people's, you know, what are you thinking?
Yeah, that would be good.
Early June?
After that, after graduation.
Do it after that? I was going to say, yeah, instead of doing our Tuesday regular meeting, maybe just have a workshop on UCOA so we don't have to pick an extra day.
Yeah, that would be good.
Does that sound all right?
That's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
Could that be a public meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And it's kind of what we looked at, what we looked at before.
Mm-hmm.
Talking about it.
Which will be good for the public to hear.
You know, they have it set up and then they have all the subaccounts.
Yeah, right.
And the subaccounts, the subaccounts, where we match up versus.
In the state.
I think we want to use suburban.
Yeah, I think that's what we are looking at, yeah.
And see where we are for the different accounts.
What we spend more on, what we spend less on.
Yeah, it just gives you a better understanding on a per pupil basis where you're spending your money.
And your people, not that we don't have a strategic plan, but maybe we don't have a strategic plan.
I think we do.
We'll sort of think of that as an entree into sort of thinking where else we should be going or.
I think it's, I think it's more for budgeting purposes, to say where we've been, you know, where we've been. We do have a strategic plan which is going to expire next year.
Yep.
So it comes to fall, we'll be back at it. So, yeah, that would also help serve.
It might be worthwhile looking at that at the same time.
I think the plan, the strategic plan can come, we can look at the current plan.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm just saying.
To see if it plugs in, sure.
Yeah.
And we could do that as well.
Yeah, we do have.
Twenty-twelve, twenty-fifteen?
Yep.
You stay long enough, they just blend.
Then I'm giving myself a pass on this.
Don't worry, it'll be the, you're right.
Building committee, Mr. Riber?
Yes, I'm seeking permission, seek volunteers to form a building committee so that we can really complete stage one of the building process that we talked about with our architectural firm that we had before us.
So will they, will they, will you ask them to look, what's their task?
Task, and I'll go back, I haven't talked to the architects in a month or so, but basically it's, we need to have one to show Ride we have a building committee.
Yeah, that I knew.
There, it's what you want it to be. It's, you could assign them, okay, look at it and then prioritize back to us.
That's, yeah.
Look at this facility study.
What you feel.
Yeah, do you agree, do you agree with the architects, do you not?
Yeah, do you think they're, all their ones are ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Or would you pull from there?
Would you move them around, you have to move it on a chart.
Okay.
And then you take, and then I would take it from there. And then we put our plan together with the architect and say, okay, we talked to the building committee.
Okay.
They gave us recommendations. We agree, we don't agree, we modified it, but here's our plan. And then we put that plan, you know, one, two, three, four years in. And then they'll help us, you know, see it, you know, how it has to be.
All right, that sounds good.
So that's, that's how I see it. I don't see it like in the past when we had the building committee, they oversaw, you know, do you use white paint or do you use beige paint?
No, we'll have to do that again.
You know, that's, that's not like this.
No.
Really be, we probably should call it something different than a building. I think Ride wants a building.
That's okay, as long as, as long as you.
Review committee.
Right, right, that would be good.
Do the report and then kind of come back.
Right, because we're not actually building.
Yeah, because it would be nice to have a couple of architects in, if anyone's watching, to loosen down.
Mike Zimmick.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sure they'll come, gave us three years of his life. And then, and, but then parents can also, you see, if you read the report, you know, yeah, it does, you know, the lighting is lousy or whatever, you know, so. And I think that's, and Ride wants that building committee simply for when they come down to say, are your parents involved in the process? And then we say, yes, they are.
Was your community involved?
Right, that's right.
That's what pays our.
So could we have a motion, please, though it'll be formal for Ride?
We reform, we give superintendent permission to form a facility review committee.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we, shall we, usually there is a school committee liaison or something?
I would ask that a couple of you practice, you know, say, at least one, maybe two, if you want. I mean, you can't have three because it's not really, but.
Yeah, I know.
At least two, it doesn't matter, because we've always had committee members on basis bands. So, anyone else to come? Okay, well, if anyone's.
Somebody will go.
Why don't you form the committee and see what the timing is and then we can see whose schedule it fits better, too.
Good idea, thank you. Interim principal and dean of students?
Yes, when I wrote this, I've been part of it, it's my mistake. Obviously, Mr. Fizette is out of his example. I certainly want to recommend Mr. McKinnon as the high school principal until Steve returns. What I failed to do was I forgot that Mr. McGuire has assistant principal, he has a coordinator's tip. So he could be appointed as assistant for the school as well. So I would ask, and I think we can, even though it says dean of students, I would recommend that Mr. McKinnon be appointed interim for the, until Steve returns and then Mr. McGuire, until the end of June. You know, when school gets out and pick him back up then and probably advise committee more. You know, status of student return by then.
So you want interim high school principal and interim?
Interim assistant.
Interim assistant, okay.
Any questions?
Before you do, that also means that I'm going to up their salary in the short term. So, because they'll be doing the duties of those positions. We have money, I'm sorry, told me, it's not that much.
I'm sure he has.
Well, he's on vacation, he said, don't spend any money.
Don't spend any money while I'm on the arm back.
Can't, can't pay it till he gets back.
He doesn't want me to spend it.
Okay, no questions then, everything good?
No check.
All, all those in favor? Okay. Status of seniors, the kneecap?
Yes, we have eleven seniors that are, under the graduation guidelines with the kneecap provision, eleven who do not score well enough on the third B test. Of the eleven, I talked to Steve today over the phone with Jack here, if I make correct, I'm sure you'll correct me. As of right now, eight of the eleven are on target to be granted a waiver if they meet other requirements. There's three that are, that might not graduate, not in addition to the waiver issue, other graduation requirements. So eight of the eleven look like, I'm talking to the senior.
So do we have?
Do we have an?
Do we have to do anything or?
No, no, it only comes.
Okay, it only comes if there's an appeal?
If I could be, waiver from committee of high school and I don't grant it.
Then it would come, okay.
Then they have the right.
Okay, okay. And I know Steve's not here, but I know you two have really been working hard on this. I appreciate it very much.
Listen, I'd like to say how hard Mr. Fizette has been working amazingly with all these parents and these, and everyone else, too, but.
I told him he didn't have to hurt himself.
I mean, we really miss him.
I'm going to Skype them at the graduation. I said, I'm not giving this to you, Jack. That's what we're still trying to figure out, he says it's an accident, because his wife wasn't home, so.
Mr. McKinnon, do you have anything you want to say about it?
No, Mr. Raver covered everything. There are three students right now that are still in jeopardy. But it's more than just the waiver.
There's other reasons, okay.
There are other, yeah, requirements that they're, they have not yet.
No, that's not.
Yeah, I mean, how does that compare with previous years? It's always a couple, right?
It's about the same, it's about the same. We've been running, usually it's us and a half a dozen a year where kids just, you know, they bumble it at the end.
And then if they get it later, don't forget, I'll come and present it to them in the office, we'll have our little ceremony. Definitely. Okay, is that it?
Yes, May twenty-first is senior project, it's Wednesday, so if anyone still hasn't signed up, would like to, call the high school, talk to the course, and of course, night is May, Jack, it's May twenty-eighth, the high school.
Twenty, is it, the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth?
Twenty-eight at six-thirty.
Oh, the twenty-ninth is the one during the day here.
Yes, there's two, the night one is the twenty-eighth. And that's because if you've ever been to one, you like the academy awards, so.
I have been to seven.
And Stephen, his infinite wisdom.
Split them.
Which I support in whole heart.
Any other announcements? Yes?
I'd like to invite everyone to the Fourteenth Annual Fort Barton School Memorial Day Parade. This will take place on Friday, May twenty-third. They'll be leaving Fort Barton School at two fifteen and marching down Lawton Avenue and arriving at the World War Two Doughboy Memorial Statue at Grinnell Beach on Main Road.
We've got a special hat for this year.
Perfect, and we'll also have the bagpiper there.
Oh, that's fabulous. No, no, no.
I have announcement, but this is from our art department. They had a band year with awards and so forth. We did color conference for everybody. A winning season for our art department.
That's right. Thank you, that's it? Very nice.
We'll give one to you, we'll give one to Mark.
Thank you, Lori.
Anybody else have any more announcements?
No. Motion to adjourn.